Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our March meeting. Tonight, we have three presentations. We're so excited to have the Brown's Chapel Elementary Science Fair winners with us. For those of you that kind of watch regularly, you know that that's an event that I judge every year. And I'm always amazed at the wonderful projects the children have, but not only the projects that they construct, but also their public speaking skills. So, we're glad to have them. And to what, one thing that I did forget before we move into that, we need to do pledge and prayer. So Rex, if you'll do our prayer for us tonight, and then Jeff Peach, if you'll do our pledge for us, if you'll stand with us.
Lord, thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for keeping us safe. We thank you for this town that we live in, Lord, and pray that you would be with our first responders and people that keep us safe. We pray for wisdom and guidance from the council. We're just blessed to be here, and we thank you for looking over us. We love you, and in your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rex, Jeff. I got so excited about the science fair, I just almost forgot that. So, to what, before we move into getting to talk to the individuals, we have Ms. Kenworthy who's here. So if you'll come forward, and will you tell us a little bit about the process and how the children get to where we are tonight?
Okay, so we start by sending home a packet with every student that asks them, "What's your, what question do you want to answer? What's your hypothesis?" And a little bit more about what kind of project they want to develop. So they bring that back to us, and we either approve it, or we say, "Maybe you need to do a little bit more work on it." And so, once their project is approved, they come back on Science Fair Day and set up everything in the gym. And the projects they create are amazing, amazingly elaborate. And so after school, when all the projects have been set up, we have teachers from every grade level come in, usually three to five teachers from every grade level come in and score which ones they think are their favorite. So they pick their top five from every category, and we have three categories: investigations, experiments, and engineering. So teachers pick their top five from every category, and we tally up all the votes, and from there, we find the top five finalists. So, the next day, the top five finalists come in, they set their projects up in a little bit more confined area, and we bring in judges like Mayor Reed and other people in the STEM community to ask them questions and have them tell them about their project. And our judges come in, and they pick their top three and score them like that. And that's how we end up with places one through five.
Well, and John, did we turn you on? I just want to say how much we appreciate all of the time and effort you all put in as educators. I know you're not always told how much you're appreciated, but I will tell you, you do make a difference. And Mr. Gill was in the education field for quite a while, and I just sent him an email today from somebody who is a teacher at Stewart's Creek High School, and what a difference he made by allowing a new program to be at a school and changed his whole career path. So, you might not know it today, but you are making a difference in those children's lives, so thank you for what you do.
I appreciate you saying that.
Which group are we going to bring up first? Does it matter? Do you have a certain one?
No, I was going to send them all up.
Okay, well, see what, if we can do investigations, do we have the ones from investigations here? So, investigations? And so our winners for investigation were Kennedy Walker, Isabella Booker, Jenna Knox, Carson Cannon, come on up, and Kate Rhodes. And I will tell you, some of them are not able to be here, some of them are suffering from the flu and other illnesses. So to what, if you'll come this way, and if you will turn towards camera, because we'll make sure we get you on camera. And, Mr. Mark? Will you take care of certificates for me and figure out which two these are? So I'm going to let you tell us your name and whose class you're in, and then, are you going to be the one speaking tonight about your project? Yes, okay, so tell us your name and your class, and then tell us a little bit about your project.
My name's Jenna Knox, and I'm in third grade. And I got inspired to do this project because me and mom would always race, me and my sister would always race my mom to the mailbox, and I just got curious on how the age might affect the reaction time. So, we, so I did where people would hold their hand out, and I would drop a roller, and they wouldn't know when I would drop the roller, and they would see how fast they could catch it.
Well, I'm glad you didn't use Mr. Gill as a person, because he probably couldn't have caught it at all, but, so...
He didn't have to swing a ruler.
Did he know how to swing a ruler? I bet these kids don't have to deal with that anymore. So, congratulations, you did a nice job, and you finished what place? Third place, good job. Okay, so I'm going to let you introduce yourself, and tell us whose class you're in.
I'm Carson Cannon. I'm 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade.
And just tell us not about everything about your project, but just what it was, the title of it.
Um, my title was Hydraulics in Motion.
Very good. So Mr. Mark has a certificate for you?
There's Jenna's.
And Carson's. And we'll look right here for the newspaper and for Chief Bill will get pictures. Mr. Mark, you want to get in here? Okay, thank you, you guys did great. Okay, why don't we do, next is, we'll do engineering.
Are these the people that are here?
Those are the ones that are not here, so we need to give those to Ms. Kenworthy. And engineering is this group. Hi, come on up. Are you, are you my speaker? Are you the first-place winner? Who's first-place winner? Oh, you're going to be the speaker. Okay, so tell us your name, class, who's your teacher, and what your project was, just the title of it.
I'm Logan Foster, and I'm in Ms. Boyce's class, and my project was Bloom Powered Lego Car.
Very good. Tell us your name, teacher, and your project.
My name is Happy Taylor. My teacher's name is Ms. Insomo, and my science fair project's name was The Amazing World of Police.
Very good. And you're going to get to tell us a little bit more about your project, because you were first-place winner, right? Okay, so what place were you?
Fourth.
Fourth-place winner?
Mm-hmm.
And you were third-place winner, and you were the first-place winner? Okay, so tell us your name, teacher, and a little bit about your project.
My name's Emily Jones, and my teacher's name is Ms. McGuigan, and my project title was Wind Turbines. So I designed four different rotor blades for a wind turbine, and two out of the four of them worked, and two of them failed, and...
Do you think wind turbines are something we ought to think about for alternative energy?
Yes.
Yes, very good. Well, you all did a great job, and Mr. Mark has certificates for you.
Logan. Ms. Taylor.
Great. And if you will look right that way. Okay, then I think we have parents that are this way, so we're going to have to look this way, too. There we go. Nice job, thank you all. And our last group is Experiment. And I think Experiment's the one that I judged, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, you know the drill, because I think you've been here every year, haven't you? And I think you've been here, too, so you all know what you're supposed to be doing.
Yes. My name's Aspen Sorenson. I'm in fifth grade, Ms. Boyce's class. I'm 10 years old, and my project was holograms and what material makes a better 3D projector for them.
Great.
My name is Cadence Hill, and I'm in Ms. McGuigan's class, and my title of my project was, Does the Angle of a Fidget Spinner Affect How Long It Spins?
Very good. Nice job. Mr. Mark has your certificate.
Aspen. Okay, congratulations.
All right, we've got to get a picture. Great. How was that one of them wrong? Okay, thank you. Well, I think you all can see why I'm always so impressed every year. Can you imagine being in third through fifth grade and coming up here and doing this on TV in front of a group? They just do an amazing job. So, I just want to thank everybody from Brown's Chapel for all you all do for the kids there, and then for allowing them to come to the Town Council Workshop every year to present. We really look forward to it every year, so thank you. Thanks. John. I will tell you, it is really tough in making the decision as to which kids are going to be the winners, because they all do such an amazing job, and some of the experiments are really cool. So if you ever get the opportunity to go judge the Science Fair at any of the schools, I recommend that you take them up on the offer. So, now, we're excited to have the Nashville Chamber of Commerce here. The Vital Signs is something that they present every year at the Mayor's Caucus, and I think last year was our first year that we had them out to present to council. And they always have such great information that I wanted them to be able to come out tonight and share with you all what we got to hear at the Mayor's Caucus. So, I'm not, who's going to speak? You guys speak? Great.
Well, I'm just the introducer, that's all. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Michelle Gaskin-Brown. I am Vice President of Policy at the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce. I have brought with me my colleague, Mark Hamilton, who will give the presentation, as well as our data and research expert, Riley, from the Nashville Chamber, as well. In front of you, you have a copy of our 2017 Vital Signs. It comes out in the fall, and there's also a fun handout with facts about transit and education specific to Smyrna. A little bit of background on Vital Signs. This is a survey that the Nashville Chamber, in conjunction with some other metro organizations, do a survey, and they look around the region to see what we are doing well, what kind of challenges we face, and what things we can see in the future to help shape our policy and make our region that much better. So, we look at a few specific issues and a few hot topics, such as traffic, mobility, education, and affordability, and we hope that you will be able to use this tool as you make decisions related to policy. So, thank you again for having us, and now Mark is going to take it away.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. It's an honor to be here. Welcome, Mayor, and members of the Smyrna City Council. As Michelle said, this is an ongoing process. This is the fifth year, or the fifth time that we've done this, the fifth addition. And as she mentioned, 2017 was an odd-numbered year, so this is really the executive version, the smaller version, and then this year, we'll do a more in-depth, and so next year, we'll be coming back with more in-depth information. A lot of work went into this. The Research Center team, of which Riley is part of the Coordinator of Applied Research, he's worked on this. It's been the Nashville Area NPO Research Staff, and then obviously, the Mayor's Caucus. It's been a great partnership with the Mayor's Caucus and the Nashville Area NPO. So I want to thank for the opportunity to talk about this. We also, you know, it takes money to support these things, so we have to give a little plug to some of our sponsors, but our main sponsors are Deleek, Bassberry Sims, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee, CHS, Community Health Systems, and Regions Bank. Those are our pivots. We have supporting sponsors, the First Bank, and then our media partner is USA Today Network of Tennessee. And so we want to thank them for financially making those contributions. As we said, we do this through a regional poll. This was done in 2017, and the survey was done in a 17-county area. It's two MSAs. It's the Metro Nashville area, which is 14 of the counties, and then there's three counties that were done in the Clarksville MSA, of which two of those are in Kentucky and one, obviously, is in Nashville. So those 17 counties, we developed a list, and we polled 750 residents, adult residents, within those 17 counties to come up with all this information. So we're going to present some of the key data, which I think you'll find, and then I'm going to highlight several of the more striking data, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll come back and focus more specifically to some of the research and data for Smyrna. So it's important to understand, Smyrna, whatever the population, all I would guess is probably under 50,000 here in Smyrna, you can take that in comparison to a 2 million resident area, and so we'll do some of that comparison. First, some of the key statistics about our growth and vitality. As I said, it's about 2 million people, pretty large number, if you stop and think about it in those terms. 2 million people is represented in these two MSAs. And again, that is both the Nashville and the Clarksville area. Within that group, some very interesting things that are not listed on the slide there. One is, if you take that 2 million, 8% of that 2 million, or 160,000 of those residents are foreign-born. They were not born, not only in Tennessee, but in the United States. So we've got a growing diversity there, so 8% of the population. The other thing is, as an aging senior citizen myself, 60, one out of every eight residents, or 13%, is over the age of 65. So we've got, and that number is continuing to go. So as you look at planning, you look at healthcare, you look at all the challenges that you at the city level have, it's very important to measure those and monitor those statistics. A great number is the fact that it also represents those 17 counties about $135 billion economy. If you take that $135 billion with a B and compare that to other areas in the state, as well as other states within the US, and even countries around the world, it's a pretty significant economy, and we certainly know that that's continuing to grow. As that grows, our earning power has continued to grow. The great news on earning within this 17-county area is that the median household income grew by about 11 and 1/2% over the last five years, pretty strong number. Now, there's some not-as-good news, there's some disparity in that income. African-Americans, for example, their income only grew about half of that during that same time. But overall, our residents are very, very positive about their financial future. Matter of fact, 82% of the respondents believe that their personal finances are headed in the right direction. And we know a lot of those reasons, but it's a great time to be in the metro area here in Tennessee. We then want to look about affordability of housing. And of course, every area is very different, but in using the idea that no more than 30% of your income should go towards housing. If you use that, you take those numbers, then in the metro area, that equates to about $17.63 an hour, which if you annualize that, is around $67,700. So a household or an owner needs to make almost $37,000 in that area to be able to afford housing. Now, the great news on that is, that's compared to about $44,000 is the average in the United States of America. So, overall, we're certainly, our cost of living in this MSA is less than what it would call for affordable housing, but we know we need to still work on that. Our median home sale price in this MSA is about $285,000. And of course, that varies greatly depending on what areas you're looking at. And by the way, Riley here is our data expert, so as we come up with questions, he's going to be the guy that knows where the data come from. I won't be able to explain this. I'm just a recovering politician, so I just like to make up stuff and talk about it, so...
Aren't we?
That's right. We won't worry about the facts, right? We'll let Riley deal with those. And we found there's really two ways to affect the affordable housing. One is the supply of housing, and so, in other words, how many houses, what's the available part? And then also, the expansion of the transit. And we're going to talk about transit. We know it's very important right now in the metro area, but the transit services across the region is going to be very key to all of this. And as we move into mobility, when I left Nashville today to come over here, I just kind of walked, I'd never been to City Hall here in Smyrna, so I took my MapQuest at various times of the day to see. And it's amazing how you can look at noon and see how long it's going to take you, and then as you get closer to rush hour, how long. And I made it plenty of time, but the point is, mobility is becoming a bigger and bigger issue, no matter what part of Middle Tennessee that you live in. In the last five years, in this MSA, there's increased 111,000 commuters a day. Five years, 111,000. Do you think that number's going to go up or down as we continue to grow? So it's going to continue to grow over the last five years. In 2017, when this was done, it was said that 78% of the Regions respondents, the people that responded to this, were in more traffic today than they were the same time the previous year. Well, when they went back to the previous year, it was only 62%. So from a public perception standpoint, people are saying consistently, traffic is getting worse. On February the 6th, the Nashville Metro Council voted overwhelmingly to include the Let's Move Nashville Plan on the May 1 ballot in Davidson County. We know that that's coming forward. Lot of discussion out there on that. Just three major points of that particular program. It's going to be 26 miles of new light rail, it's going to be a more robust bus service with longer hours, and a 1.8-mile tunnel below downtown. Some of the things that it's going to make happen is, it's going to increase transit options and open employment possibilities. And we talk about, we're going to talk about workforce development here in just a moment, and the workforce is going to be a key, key part of the economy in Middle Tennessee. We've got to be able to access educational institutions. We're going to talk about education in just a moment. And then we'll increase an even more diverse, robust, and quality pool of talent, which talent, again, is going to be very, very specific, and we're going to get into the talent pool here, the education level here in Smyrna compared to the rest of the region. And we know that this May 1 referendum's going to happen, and we fully expect that there'll be additional referendums over the next few years as we continue to look at the mobility options and the things that we need. Now, moving into education, education's key. I think this was a great example, it was a great lead-in for what we're going to talk about, brought back some memories of not only me, but my grandchildren. I remember I was in parliamentary procedures in FFA, and I'm telling you, these kinds, at this level, is when you really create the confidence for people to take those things and move forward. But quality K-education is absolutely paramount, very, very important. 72% of the respondents say that the quality of public schools is a key factor where they choose to live. And if you don't believe that, just go through a school rezoning, and you'll find out very quickly how important that is. Hope I don't step on any toes there, but it is very, very, in growing areas, it is amazing how many people will move to a subdivision for a school, and then several years later, you redistrict, and it creates all kinds of challenges. So key, the public education is so key in doing that. A little more than 2/3, or 64%, that have children within the schools, say that they're satisfied with the quality of education that their kids in the family receives. Interestingly enough, some statistics, it's kind of a diverse group, it ranges all the way from 54% satisfaction in Davidson County, which obviously means that there's a lot of work to do, up to a high of 85% in Williamson County, which doesn't mean there's not work to do, but a very, very diverse satisfaction level on two counties that butt up against each other. So it talks about the importance of that. Then as we move into higher education, beyond K-12, beyond high school, it becomes increasingly important as far as the level of going into key jobs. I saw a statistic recently, and it said that 65% of the children in grade school today will be in jobs that do not exist today. That is, that's the rapidity, that's the speed at which our workforce and our talents are going to have to change and grow to become able to do that. You think about, as a man my age, the jobs that we have today that weren't even thought of when I was in grade school. So it's amazing, we've got to stay on top of that, or we're going to pay a very high price for not doing that. So Drive to 55 is a very, very important initiative here in the state of Tennessee. That's to get 55% of Tennesseans with a college degree or certificate by the year 2025. The good news is, we're making progress. The bad news is, we've got a long way to go. In 2010, 36.4% of our residents had a two-year degree. Now, to increase to 40.5% by the year 2015, but again, we still have a long way to go. One way to achieve this is to increase our graduation rate. No matter what our graduation rate is, it needs to be higher. We've got to find a way to get those students graduated, especially in our community colleges. Previous state that I was in, very similar to Tennessee, it's the same thing. The technical college, the community college, they are such a gem, they're such a, unfortunately, in most states, they're underutilized for what they can do for so many students, and I think Tennessee is the same thing. If you look at, listen to these statistics, it'll help prove that point. Across the state, in other words, the entire state of Tennessee, only 24% of community college students graduate in three years, only 24%. Let's advance that to six years, and unfortunately, only 36% graduate from community college level at 36, only 36% of those graduate in six years. So we've got a huge opportunity at the community college level to get these students prepared for whatever it is that they want to do as they move into. One of those things is to take the adults and take them back to community college, take them back to college for retraining and do those kinds of things. An example of this would be Middle Tennessee Reconnect Community, where 2,300 adult students are returning to college to finish their degree. They're being supported by advisors and reconnect ambassadors, helping them navigate the system. So there's a lot of opportunity out there, but we've just got to, not only at the grade school level, but we've got to take these young adults and older adults and provide an opportunity and encouragement for them to move into those areas. Then, as we move into something very near and dear to me, and that's health and wellness. How do we feel? What's our health level? And as we compare Tennessee to other areas, it's a key area. And you can't talk about health without talking about the opioid epidemic, since there's some amazing statistics on this that ought to just shake us all up and realize what a problem and a challenge that is, not only here in Middle Tennessee, but across through this great country. 55% of Middle Tennesseans are concerned about someone they know who's addicted to drugs or alcohol. 55%. That means that over half of us in here are concerned about someone that we know has an addiction. Fully 42% of our Region's residents know someone who's struggling with addiction to prescription painkillers. That's amazing, 42% of us know someone that's addicted to that. Let me give you a couple other statistics that weren't found on this at a recent conference I was at. 1/3 in the United States today, 1/3 of all Medicaid recipients are because or related to opioid addiction, 1/3. And here's the most incredible, for those of you at my age that remember the Vietnam Conflict, in 2016, there were more deaths in the United States because of opioid overdoses than there were in the entire Vietnam War. That's how many people died in this country. So, it's a real issue, it's something real that we really need to get our hands around. In addition to that, there's other just basic things. It not only affects people personally, but there's an associated cost of those types of things, cost to the business, cost to the families. It's estimated that here in Tennessee, that we spend, we lose over $500 million a year in productivity because of, there's two terms here, absenteeism, which most of us know, but there's a new term out there called presenteeism. Presenteeism is when people show up for work, they get paid, but mentally, they're really not present. They've checked out, they're not doing that. So they're getting paid while they're sitting there or working there, but they're not doing it. And if you take that $500 million, those are associated with diabetes, obesity, and hypertension. And almost half of that, 240 million of that 500 million, is lost productivity due to obesity. It's a real, real problem. It's not in my notes, but if you look at congestion, they estimate by 2013, Nashville is estimated to see an economic impact of $43 million annually simply on what it costs, the health concerns of being in congestion, and the length of that congestion. There's a clear leadership opportunity, clear leadership in many ways, whether it's a business, whether it's the city council and the mayor, but there's opportunities, and there's examples out there where companies and people are taking the opportunity, individuals, of leading and saying that they need to do something about these things, building a good health and workplace. In my workplace, as an example, about 17,000 square foot, we only have two trashcans in the whole place. The idea is to get people up to walk to their trashcan. We only have two printer locations to do those kinds of things. And so there's lots of other examples where you let natural light in, but there's a lot of things that businesses are doing. I find it very, it's not related to Tennessee, but I find it very interesting how Amazon, JP Morgan, and Berkshire Hathaway just recently got together. If you take their employee base, 1%, think of this, 1% of the US payroll is in those three companies. And so they're coming together to start... And so they're coming together to start their own healthcare provision for their companies. And so that's how important it is. And we're going to continue, we as employers and as leaders in the community need to make sure that we're leading it by example to make those things happen. And then finally, I want to move into Smyrna specifically. Think you might find these interesting. We can go back one there. Dealing with transportation or transit, 25,000 workers, make sure you read this right. There's a 7,500 daily swing. You have 7,500 more employees crossing the city limits into Smyrna each day to come to work than you have going out. So we have 26,000 workers commute into Smyrna, nowhere they live outside of Smyrna, the city limits. It's not necessarily Davidson County, or it's not that, it's the city limits here. Okay, so 26,000 workers come into Smyrna each day for work and 18,500 workers leave the city limits to find employment or go to a job outside of that. In the last five years, the commute time has gone up 16%. It's gone from 28, it's gone from 24.4 minutes a day commute to 28.2. So it doesn't sound like a big number, but 16% over that five years. And once again, I would ask you, you think that's going to get better or worse? And so it just gives you an idea of why transportation and what we're doing about transportation is so important today and going to become even more important. And then the final area that I'll discuss is education. And as you can see, the Nashville MSA has a two-year, an associate's degree or higher of 41.4%, and it says Smyrna residents are at 33.1%. Doesn't mean that you're not as educated, but if you compare from that statistic, it says that the workforce, when you look at economic development, it looks like the workforce surrounding Smyrna is going to have a high, consistently a higher level of two-year degree or higher. And during this interesting time, this five years, you've also added about 6,500 jobs during this five years. And if you look at the difference there between those two, that's about 7,500, so it's pretty close to the same number. And with that, that's really the information that we have to present. We'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments or feedback. And I know that Michelle will be happy to get you any additional information. And with that, I'd just ask the question, any questions or anything we can provide for you?
I've got one question that I might ask.
Yes, sir.
In relation with the opioid crisis, are there any statistics that reflect how many, the percentage of those that are addicted through prescription drugs versus drugs bought on the streets or from dealers, et cetera?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I could look that up and get something to you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing that.
These are the type of questions that we can get to you.
Yeah, I do concur that it's a tremendous issue facing society, probably the biggest thing we faced in my lifetime with respect to dealing with it. I think the chief of police would probably concur with that as well.
Other questions for Mark?
I can't tell you how much we appreciate you all coming out. And I'm sure if they have questions, we will email you guys, but it's always eye-opening to see the statistics. And I really appreciate this year, you all pulling some together just for Smyrna. That's really helpful to us. So thank you all for coming out and for what y'all do throughout the year.
Well, thank you and thank you all for what you do. I know we can be very thankless at times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Mike Strange and Bert Neese on natural gas safety. Good afternoon, evening.
Hello, thank you. Bert has put together a little presentation. It kind of encompasses some of our emergency response plan and the public awareness plan in gas. There's a requirement in place now that we educate public officials, so it's very short and sweet and to the point, so I'll turn it over to Bert. If you have any questions, either one of us can answer.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. It's good to see you all again. The presentation, as Mike said, we'll try to make it short and sweet, but if you have any questions along the way, don't hesitate to let me know. We'd be glad to answer them now while we're here. This is the home of our natural gas distribution system. This is where our eight field staff spend their day. Generally, they're only there for about 30 minutes and then they're back out in the field. You see them out there every day, working hard to try and keep people safe and try and provide the services that the people have requested of us. Just want to put things in perspective a little bit for you. We've got 274 miles of main line. That's just simply the lines that are running in front of the homes. That doesn't include the service lines going to the businesses and to the residents. We've now got 10,430 customers. As you know, we've got a population of about 49,000 people, 10,430 customers, that represents homes and businesses. We're very fortunate, about 80% of our system is polyethylene pipe, which what that means is we don't have a lot of corrosion issues. It's a very good product, it works very well for us. 92% of our customers are served by that polyethylene pipe. The portion that is not polyethylene pipe, you're going to probably find over in the airbase, the older areas where you're going to have some metallic lines. In the year 2017, we had 20 hits to our system. In other words, somebody may have scratched the pipe, they may have completely broken the pipe. In other words, it required our gentlemen to respond to that and take some corrective action to prepare, to repair that pipe. We have purchased in 2017, 2.5 billion cubic feet of gas. That gives you an idea of how much volume we're putting out there. You talked, you heard from Mark about the MSA statistics. This will give you some information about our own little town and how much we've grown and how big our territory is now. Since 1990, we have grown by more than 4,200 customers. Our square miles of this town has increased from 21 to 32. And as you know, our population statistically is, or officially, has increased from 13,647 to 47,529, or 521, excuse me. We all know that's probably underreported. If we did another count, we're probably over 50,000 by now. Since 2000, we've issued 6,451 permits, housing permits, excuse me. What do we do for damage prevention? Well, we do some things every year, and we do these pretty well, I think. We do an annual leak survey. The leak survey, you might have seen a couple gentlemen out in town riding around in a golf cart waving a little wand, and you might think that looks like a fun thing to do, but what they're actually doing is they're trying to identify leaks that are in the ground or in apparatuses that might be above ground.
That wasn't Mr. Gill looking for his golf ball.
No.
Might have right down the center of the fairway.
There are a couple men on the staff that are really good golfers. But they'll do the leak survey, and of course, we classify these leaks. There's three different levels. If it's a grade-one leak, we fix it right away that day. We've had circumstances where we've run across something that we might have never known about if it weren't for the leak survey. Things that fall to a grade-three level, they too get fixed, they just don't necessarily get fixed that day, but we have a very quick turnaround time on our leak repairs. In fact, we've been commended by the regulatory agency that oversees us for doing that. I mentioned the metallic pipe that we have. You know, if you put anything that's metallic in the ground, it has the potential to rust. So what you have to do is provide cathodic protection to it. Cathodic protection means that we run an electric current alongside that. So we do a cathodic protection survey every year, and that lets us know that that electric current is still producing and therefore keeping the pipe from oxidizing. We go around and paint the meters. We do this on a systematic basis, too. We try to do it in certain billing cycles, things of that nature. So we go out there and we paint the residential meters, the commercial meters, we do them all. That keeps the rust from building up on anything outside of the residence or the business. We also have regulator and relief stations throughout the town. We have a couple gentlemen, that's their primary duty. They do weekly, they do monthly, they do these regulator station inspections so that they make sure that they're performing the way they should, the relief valves go off when they should go off, the regulators are bringing the pressure of the gas down to the proper pressure before it goes into our distribution system. We're also a part of Tennessee 811. This is a very big component of our damage prevention program. Tennessee 811 is supported by member utilities such as Smyrna, AT&amp;T would be a part of it, Comcast, Middle Tennessee Electric Membership. And what it allows you to do, you can call at any time that you intend to break the surface of the ground. You might think that what you're going to do is minor in scope, but I have colleagues that can show you some polyethylene pipe that was damaged simply by somebody trying to put a tomato stake in the ground. They weren't comprehending where they were putting their stake in relationship to the natural gas distribution system around their house. So they take a sledgehammer, put a stake in the ground, they break the pipe, and subsequently we've got a gas leak. 811 will identify or will call all the utilities within your digging area. Those utilities will come out and those utility departments will mark whatever they have under the ground. There's some other reasons to use it. It's free, it's a simple phone call. It protects your underground utilities. You want to make sure that you're getting those services for which you're paying. If you hit the cable line in your neighborhood, guess what? You're not going to be the most popular guy at the block party. It protects your property. If you hit an electric line, you hit a gas line, you could have some harm to yourself or your property. And again, it protects your life. So that's why we encourage people to call 811 before they do any digging. If you want to know what happens when you don't call, here's a short little video.
A water company backhoe operator working to install a new fire service line instead broke a gas line, caused a fire. He was fortunate to escape, but his backhoe and the nearby fence and tree were not so lucky.
Phone call from my wife saying the house is on fire. Didn't even believe her. I said, what, are you serious?
Plumbers trenching near an apartment building struck a buried two-inch gas line, catching a pine tree on fire, which then caught the building on fire. Five units were damaged, the gas line was marked, and the plumbing company contends that the marks were four feet off of the actual line location.
Just got a brand-new TV yesterday and, you know, it's like, everything you own, you know, it's hard.
A mail delivery truck overturned and took out a streetlight signal, closing the road early one Sunday morning. A contractor responding to the emergency was working to repair the streetlight when he struck a buried gas main. According to the fire chief responding to the scene, the contractor called for an emergency locate but didn't wait for the lines to be marked before beginning his excavation. Gas leaked for five hours before the gas company was able to shut down the main.
Sometimes the consequences can almost be a comedy of errors. How in the world did that happen? And you wonder how it played out that way, but it did. But sometimes there's grave consequences and we still can't figure out how it happened. The pipeline incident in Alabama this year, you know, the pipeline had ruptured. To get the pipeline back in service, get the gasoline moving again, they built a bypass. And they fixed the pipe, and in the process of taking down that bypass and restoring the pipe back to its original state, an excavator hit the pipeline and it was a fatality. And it's just crazy, how did that happen? It's a tragedy. Our attention to what we already know sometimes wanes. Just because you're very good at what you do and you've been safe through all these years of doing it, you just never know what could happen if you take your eye off the ball even for a second.
The thing about each and every one of those incidents is they were all preventable. Number one, call before you dig. Number two, if you're digging, you're unsure about the marks, give us a call back. We have sent staff out before to spot a line and to make sure that you don't infringe upon it or cause any damage. The other thing is, I was thinking about the Alabama situation, the excavator, under those circumstances, probably should have gotten off of the excavation equipment and started digging by hand. That sometimes is an issue that we run into. What do you do if you have the signs of a leak? This is where you come into play as the citizens, as the members of the council, those that are on our customer base. If signs of a leak, you're going to have a rotten egg smell, you may have hissing or blowing. That's going to depend upon the volume with which the gas is being released. You might have dead vegetation on the ground. Natural gas is not, you know, friendly with your yard and your landscaping, it's going to want to kill it. You might have bubbling water on the ground if the gas leak is covered up by water. You might have frost on the top of the ground. Again, it doesn't react well in certain environments, and so those are little hints that are going to give you an idea that something's wrong. You have some of those hints, what do you do? These are the steps we want you to follow. We want you to call us. Call 615-459-2553 or call 911. Oftentimes, you'll see when we have a response that our staff will be out there and the fire department will be out there as well to provide us backup. Clear the area immediately, but when you clear the area, if you're calling from a landline, please don't hang up the landline. I'll just read all of these off and I'll tell you why at the end. Don't hang up the landline, don't flip any switches, don't start any vehicles, don't open the garage door, and don't open the windows. Obviously, what we're trying to do is eliminate any potential for a spark. Remember the principles of the fire triangle, heat, fuel, and oxygen. If you don't have a heat/ignition source, we don't have a problem. So let's try not to create some sort of a spark. What do we do also? We engage in public awareness year-round. These are some events that we do to try and get our message out to the citizens. We participate in the Easter egg hunt, we've been participating in the Safety Expo for the last three years. This has been a really good event for us because we're in an environment where we have an opportunity to speak to people one-on-one. So we've made some really good contacts in that setting there. We're always there at the fireworks celebration, we're always there at Halloween in the park as well. We welcome any speaking engagements, myself or Director Strange, we love to go talk to different groups. And we've also started doing the annual United Way Golf Scramble. At this event, I've actually interacted with an awful lot of business owners and been able to exchange some information with them. We broadcast, we use broadcast media, excuse me, Channel 3, John Lanza has been great about carrying public information spots for us about what to do in the event of a natural gas leak. As a member of Tennessee Gas Association, we participate in radio spots. You hear those spots that are saying there's pipelines all around the country, what do you do if you run across one? We've used bill inserts in the past, and we also put information on our town's website for people. This is the last slide, and it might seem cliche, but it's still very applicable. If you see something, say something. Please remember this, this is your natural gas distribution system and this is your community. So we want you to give us a phone call if you suspect that something's wrong. That's what we're paid to do, we want to come out, we want to check it out. And if everybody will protect it, we'll also protect each other. So that's our presentation and we appreciate you giving us the time.
Thanks, Bert.
Thank you.
Any questions for Bert or for Mike, either one? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into our items for discussion. Our first item for discussion is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01. Kevin?
This is the plan of services. The first three items on your agenda are all regarding the same area. This is the plan of services for the annexation of 321901, part of 1901. It's about 16.53 acres of land. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01, containing approximately 16.53 acres. It's requested by J.M. Burns LLC. The zoning would be R3. The property is located south of Rock Springs Road and adjacent to parcels previously annexed and zoned PRD, Woodmont, Buckingham Hills, as well as the Woodcrest Development, and this is a second reading.
Mr. Mayor and Council, nothing has changed on this since you looked at this for first reading. This is an annexation and R3 zoning request. Again, the town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation, and we did not include about a 10-foot wide area adjacent to the property to the west so that the remaining portion of this parcel would not be forced to be annexed between the requested area and Rock Springs Road. Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this?
Mark and Tim, I just want to make sure that the planning commission, we kind of talked about access, that with any other stuff that comes in, that y'all make sure that...
Yeah, and that was important to us. And, you know, one of the key questions to Kevin during the meeting was, would... during the meeting was, would the 18 acres, which would be approximately 50 homes, did he think that there would be capacity on Montgomery Way and the roads to get to Montgomery Way? And Montgomery Way is, of course, a collector road, and he felt that we would be okay there. But the area that's not shaded between there and Signature Court, we see the back of the homes there, that's also being proposed, and I think Mark especially made it clear, and I think he spoke for all the Planning Commission at the time, that we felt there would have to be more access available before we even considered opening up this additional tract of land.
Good. Well, hopefully, hearing what we're saying at council and hearing what y'all are saying at Planning Commission, the developer will understand that that's what has to be done to be able to move forward with any other projects. So, okay. Item three is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance number 18-05 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01. That's our housekeeping item that we are required to do. So we'll move on to item four, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for annexation and C2 zoning, and the plan of services for this is essentially the, the town would be providing all services here except for water. It does allow within CUD's boundary for water. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this plan of services.
Questions for Kevin on this? Move on to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04, containing approximately 1.75 acres. It's requested by the Patel's. The zoning would be C2. The property is located at 8216 Florence Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, nothing has changed on this since you looked at this for first reading. Again, it's been requested to be annexed and zoned C2. It is currently zoned CS or Commercial Services in Rutherford County, but they have requested annexation, and they do want to redevelop this property in compliance with the C2 zone, so they have requested C2 zoning with the annexation.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've already talked about it, but anything else? Okay. The next one is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 18-06 relative to the annexation and C2 zoning of property located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04. So we'll put that on the agenda as well. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 49, parcel 30.02, containing approximately 3.35 acres. It's requested by Rocky Top Properties LLC to go from R3 to I3, and the property is located at 215 Mill Lane, and this is also a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, again, there's no changes from what you looked at at first reading. This was looked at by Planning Commission a few months ago with an R6 request, and that did receive a negative recommendation. And so the property owner did come back and does wish to go back to the I3 zoning, which is what this property was zoned for many years prior to being rezoned to R3 a few years ago. So they have requested, again, to go back to the I3 zone, and again, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this.
Questions for Kevin?
Were the two properties, the properties on both sides also R3 or are they I as well?
The property to the south is R3. The property to the north is industrial and to the west.
Okay.
Did they give any indication of what their thoughts are, what they're planning to do?
They don't. They didn't, no. I think they were, the owner who requested to be rezoned to R3 several, well, not several years ago, a few years ago, was having trouble refinancing his house, and so he requested to be rezoned to do that. And the adjoining parcel to the south, kind of, they came in together, and so they were rezoned. This is a new owner, and so they were looking to develop the property. Again, they wanted to do townhouses there and requested the multifamily zoning and ended up withdrawing it before council ever actually voted on it. So they're wanting to do some type of development there, and so they want to go back to what they had previously, so...
Yeah, Lori, just so you know, when they brought it in the first time, you know, they were talking about R6, which, you know, heavy density residential in there, which just was not a fit at all. And so I think they got the message loud and clear from us that we didn't see it as appropriate, and it was not a good fit, and with the majority of it being I3, with the history that Kevin gave, it just made more sense for it to be rezoned back to I3. And he really didn't give us a specific use of it, other than, you know, it's now zoned or will potentially be zoned I3, and it would fall within that usage.
Yeah, and this whole area was zoned I3 when Nissan came, so it's kind of a legacy zoning, I guess, in a way, because it's probably been there since the early 80s and has never really developed in that manner, but has had that zoning off since then.
Other questions for Kevin? We'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Pyro Shows relative to the 2018 Towne Smyrna Fireworks Show. Chief, how are you?
Mayor and Council, getting ready for July the 3rd. The Pyro Shows has agreed to hold their price another year, and we're here this evening to ask council to give the mayor permission to sign that contract, please.
I think this is probably one of the biggest events that we have in the community and one that the citizens look forward to every year, so we always enjoy working with that group, so... Questions for Chief on this? Okay. Then we'll put that on the agenda, Chief. Item nine is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SB Services relative to the telecommunications audit and analysis. Rex?
Mayor and Council, the staff is recommending SB Services to perform an audit and analysis of all telecommunications service provider accounts and invoices. The purpose of the audit is to find errors and overcharges that now exist or may have existed on past invoices. The fee for this service is 50% of the credits are overcharges, and there's an option to allow SB to negotiate ongoing savings for the town, and that fee would be 50% of the savings also.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, thanks, Rex. Item 10 is consideration of a resolution to request refunds on unclaimed property held by the state of Tennessee.
This is a housekeeping measure that we do each year. Passing this resolution allows the town to ask the state for a refund. The property is made up of outstanding checks or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were held, first by the town and secondly by the state of Tennessee.
Questions for Rex on this? We'll move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with better business equipment relative to the Parks Department copier. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, we're purchasing a new copier this year, and along with that comes a service agreement, and we've had these people, with an agreement with these people for several years, and they actually lowered their price for the copier this year. It's actually a couple thousand less than when we bought it 10 years ago. So we've had good service out of them, so we just recommend agreement to the service, the maintenance agreement.
Questions for Mike? Okay, thanks, Mike. So item 12 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the Society of European Stage Authors and Composers Music Performance License for municipalities.
We're not making that up. We got this a couple of months ago. I think it came to City Hall first or Town Hall, and it was sent to us because we have bands and performances, and we sent it to legal for them to review. And it is a real thing, and it's been around for a while, but it's like ASCAP and BMI, you have to pay the license for performances. And if you look in the fee schedule a couple of pages down, it's $883 a year. So legal has seen that.
Questions for Mike on this? Thanks, Mike. Item 13 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with Solitude Lake Management relative to the pond at J.J. McWilliams/Old Rock School Park.
Yes, ma'am. For years, we've been maintaining that ourself with our own staff, and we found that we're just not set up to do it as well as people that do it for a living. So we've had some people come in and spray it a couple of times and treat it, and with their price, we feel like they can do a better job. The vegetation over there really causes us issues for site, but also the pump systems and the liner. There's a liner up under all that rock, and vegetation's going through it, so staff's recommending us to try an annual agreement with them. It does not renew on its own. We took that out, but try it for a year and see if they can do a better job than we can.
Questions for Mike?
No, but if I could, I'd like to make a comment. I think it's, I'd be remiss if I didn't, when I see that name, J.J. McWilliams, many people in here never heard of J.J. McWilliams. Some of us have. Some of us even bet his paddle once. But he came into Smyrna High in the 50s when it was in essentially disarray and brought order to that school and turned it into a great school where people understood there were rules and rules that had to be followed, and if you didn't, there was a consequence for that. I'm proud to say that he hired me to coach basketball there, and sadly, the second year there in 1973, passed away. So when you go by that park, you know, it's hard to believe Mr. Mack's been dead 45 years, but it would be worthwhile to do a little research on him and connect with some of the older folks in town just to find out what Mr. Mack meant to this community. H.G.'s nodding and Tim and Mark and Diane. We all remember...
Diane never got paddled.
No. Are you acknowledging that you did?
I'm...
But, and I want to close, but he was a beloved man and a, golly, just such a credit to this town.
It's always amazing that, whether it's Sam Ridley or names on signs, that people don't know who they are. And sometimes, that's really sad to me that they don't know the history of our community, whether it's because of age or because they haven't lived here that long. And so I wish there was a way that we could preserve that and let citizens know on a regular basis about some of these individuals. So that may be something we want to think about.
I agree.
Item 14 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the construction of the Jefferson Springs Greenway Extension. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. The reason you see a blank there is we are sending a recommendation to TDOT for their concurrence on the low bidder. Jefferson Springs Greenway Extension includes 1.4 miles of Greenway Trail, restroom facility, two parking lots, utilities and signage. It will start in, near the disc golf course in Sharp Springs natural area and go along near the lake all the way to Jefferson Springs Recreation Area, which is part of our Greenway Master Plan. So engineers, they have reviewed the bids and are recommending sessions paving as a low bidder at $1,837,579. I will remind you, 80% of that is federally funded, which is why we have to work through TDOT, and 20% to local match. So hopefully, TDOT will get us some results before the next meeting for the council to consider. If not, we'll defer it to the next time. I think they've been taking two or three weeks to review bids. This is a big one for us. It brings utilities into the, basically, the northern east section of Sharp Springs. We don't have any utilities, lights, restrooms or anything back there, and also some parking, so we're excited about that. Been working on this since I've been director, I think. It's been many, many years.
Questions for Michael on this?
Are you looking for this to be in this fiscal budget year or is it in the proposed budget for next year?
It will be, it will cross both, I hope. I hope we can start it right now. It's in this year's budget, and we've put it in the next year's budget as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to start on it within a couple of months.
Okay.
And it is budgeted right now.
Right.
We'll also put it in next one, just in case TDOT didn't agree with it or whatever. But obviously, once we get started, we can adjust the budget if we see that we've spent some of that money.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item 15, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Barton Lawn Care relative to the mowing of the park properties.
Yes, ma'am. This is just renewal. We've already had two years of work with Barton Lawn Care on the park properties. They do a fantastic job. Staff is happy with them, so we're just asking to renew that for two more years.
Okay. And the next item is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Barton Lawn Care relative to the mowing of non-park properties.
Yes, ma'am. We bid this out last week. We opened bids, and you can see that Town Hall and Justice Center, Maple View Cemetery, wastewater and water treatment plant, several other sites throughout town are including this bid, and staff is recommending Barton Lawn Care for this one as well. They've already been doing that contract, plus they have the parks lawn contract. And part of the reason we like them is we don't have to follow them a whole lot. They do their job, and I've heard from all the supervisors and managers, they do a good job. And the other reason we like them is we're kind of committed to the beautifying the town, and they do a good job with that, and so we're recommending them for this project as well.
Okay. Questions for Mike on Barton. Then we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with S&amp;W Contracting Company Incorporated relative to the intersection improvements at Nissan Drive and Sergeant Asbury-Hahn Way at Gate 1.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the, we went out to RFP based on the design we came up with for signalizing, adding some signals to that intersection to provide the northbound left turn signal, also some other signals where the driveway connection to the storage facility connects to Sergeant Asbury-Hahn. Putting in some loop detection, bringing those back to a control panel, a control box to be able to time the lights better so that people safely get through that area without blocking, without blocking driveways and roadways. It went, like I said, it went out to RFP. We had two bidders on that. One of them, we had to disqualify because the bid came in after the deadline.
Questions for Tom?
Do you see us, Tom, ever having to actually restructure the way that road is laid out there?
With the driveway connection?
Yeah.
I don't anticipate any further development for the storage facility. The amount of traffic that it gets wouldn't continue to impact that in a negative way. I don't think it wouldn't really, it'd be better if it wasn't connected the way it is, but I don't think it's going to get any worse.
This intersection's not part of the, either one of the current ITS phases, correct?
No, not Phase 1 or Phase 2. It doesn't go down that.
Long-term, is there anything we could do there that would put us in a position later, something we wouldn't have to come back and do as we're making changes here? Can we put in some conduit or some fiber or something that we need to keep from having to do it, to prepare for that in the future?
I did send the, that, the ITS plans for that area to the consultant who designed it out, and he did incorporate some of the things, or he doesn't have to be redundant on it. I think we'll probably have to, we'll probably have to come back and do some other conduit work. It would be all directional drills, so we just have to come back and do some more.
Sounds like you guys are considering it. That's really my point. Make sure we're considering it.
Other questions for Tom on this? Okay, item 18 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to the supplemental services to the Sam Ridley widening project for an acoustic bat survey.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm afraid we're going to get a little lesson on bats this year. When Gresham Smith has a contract to go out and start the NEPA project, NEPA phase of this project, they went out and during the environmental investigation, found that there was a potential bat habitat in some trees that were located where the Potomac Place Extension is going to go through. It's not necessary that there are bats there, but it does have the potential for it, so it will be reported in the NEPA document. We are, our goal is to go ahead and submit the NEPA document with the understanding that there will be an addendum to come out to it later. It would be submitted to TDOT early, but we can't do the bat survey until May 15th when it warms up and bats can be in that area to see if there are actually bats there. And if there are, we'll report it. It doesn't impact the project overall. You're laughing. But it doesn't impact the project overall because it's a timing thing. They may be nesting during the warmer months. We just have to not cut down the trees during the warmer months and cut them down later.
That's what I was going to ask. What's the result here? So if we find bats, we have to cut the trees down at a different time?
Right. Not when they're nesting.
Can we just plan to cut them down later and move on? I mean, it seems like it'd be easier, right?
Yes.
You know, Kevin, as I recall, we had this come up at the Smyrna Business Park across from Motlow. Remember that? It was the red-winged bat or something. And we were having to time all that because, you know, the migration nesting time, I think, it's kind of the same issue. As I recall, they didn't find any nesting or any bats on that site, but refresh me on how long that took.
I think there's a two or three month window to ask people.
That's what I thought it was, so...
Just for the record, I'm going to Google red-winged bat. I don't know if that's right or not.
Don't quote me, but I think that's what it was. It's a red, like a red-headed bat or something. I don't know what it was.
That might have been a... That might have been a woodpecker.
It might have been. But if they nest, they nest too, Steve.
It's obvious I've lost all control of this meeting.
This is driven by federal government regulations?
Yes, yes. And it all has to be reported back to the state and the feds have to approve this document as well.
It's amazing to me over the years how many projects we've run into this. And that's why it's kind of humorous is that it always seems to delay us in some way. So, yeah.
We have enough delays, much less have to deal with bats.
I have to worry about the bats, yes.
An added expense as well, isn't it?
That's all right. Questions about the bat survey? Any other questions about the bat survey? Item 19 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Neil Schaefer relative to construction engineering inspection services for the Smyrna Signal Systems ITS Phases 1 and 2 project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, we went out to RFQ for CI services for ITS Phase 1 and 2 of the project. And I think we had four or five respondents to it. Neil Schaefer, based on the committee put together, Neil Schaefer had the highest score and we're asking to approve them for CI services.
Questions for Tom on this? Okay, item 20 is consideration of an ordinance relative to adding language to the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 13, Property Maintenance Regulation, specifically adding a Chapter 5 pertaining to vehicles displayed for sale, rental or distribution. And this is a first reading.
Mayor and Council, this would add a Chapter 5 to Title 13, which would specifically reference vehicles displayed for sale, rental or distribution. It would have requirements for parking lot conditions and the way these vehicles are displayed for sale. Just to run through, it defines what in automobile retail establishment is, retail establishment and wholesale establishment. Those are just property licensed, properly licensed establishments engaged in those particular forms of distribution of automobiles. And engaged primarily would mean that they sold more than one motorized vehicle or had more than one motorized vehicle for sale. It would apply to all individuals renting, distributing or retail selling vehicles. And additionally, it just sets up that they cannot park vehicles displayed for sale on an unpaved surface such as grass or gravel. Must be on a paved or concrete surface. They will be parked in a dedicated parking spot and that parking spot would be clearly marked with contrasting paint. The parking spots for these vehicles would be no less than 18 feet in length and eight feet in width. They would have a 16-foot wide path between each row of vehicles for sale to allow safe ingress and egress between the lots. Additionally, they cannot block any private or public roadway or thoroughfare. Cannot be parked in such a way as to block access to any public or private alleyway or sidewalk. No motorized vehicle displayed for sale can be parked in a manner to block a fire hydrant. And the only part in here that is blank at this point, which we need to, we've been working with the various departments. We've got to get with Chief Arnold and Chief Culberson is the distance the emergency vehicles need to get, which would be a safe distance. They need to be able to get to the buildings themselves for us to, for a fire truck to get in there, things like that. So we'll get with the chief before the next meeting and get all that hammered out. And then there sets up a violation of penalty, violation and penalty here for the owners of the businesses that do not comply with the provisions of this statute, which is a Class C, or the provisions of this title, which is a Class C misdemeanor and up to a $50 fine.
Questions for Nathan?
Is there any grandfathering?
This is a property maintenance condition, not a zoning matter, so it would be applicable when it's passed and nobody would be grandfathered in.
I just want to tell you how much we appreciate staff and what y'all have done to get on this. We have, we're working really hard to clean up Lowry Street, but also the rest of the town as well. And I think this goes a long way in doing that. So I really appreciate you all trying to figure out a way that we can start working on some of these issues that we've got.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate the folks that have helped put this together. I think one of the things I've heard during my tenure here is that people are tired of Lowry Street looking like it has. It's been a real challenge to, I don't know, monitor and force. But I think this lays the groundwork for us being able to do that. Having said that, one of the things that we, there have been two other things we've done. We met with a judge and she's going to hold court a second time, add an additional time during the course of the month. So if you get cited on April the 2nd, you won't wait until April the 30th to go to court. You go in the middle of April. And that requires people remedy whatever the citation was in a shorter period of time so people see they're doing something. Secondly, we've put in, we're taking it serious enough. I put in the budget a second codes enforcement officer so that when people have tall grass or when they have vehicles inappropriately stored or they're not, or they're circumventing our new ordinance, we're going to hit those people with citations. You know, all we're asking is that they come into compliance with what we've got on paper and help us straighten that street up.
And I don't want anybody to get the perception that we're anti-small business at all. We're very much pro-small business and pro-Smyrna. And that's one of the things that we're hearing from constituents and from just citizens of the community that they want to be proud of our community. And some of these things we're having to enforce, not because we, I mean, not because we want to, but because we have to because they're not taking it upon themselves to make their places look how we as citizens want to see it look.
Which enhances their business, by the way.
Absolutely.
So not only that, I think it's a safety matter up and down through Lowry Street especially because there's a lot of times when vehicles have been parked pretty close to the road. I had a question for Nathan. I think in the past, I don't even know if we have any kind of rule about parking space size, but there was a time, I know planning commission looked at this and we went from 10-foot to 9-foot. And is this specifically designed for parked cars? Is that why it's an 8-foot spot?
Right, and the reason we bring this to, this is actually less restrictive than what the current ordinance is. So we probably, we might have some issues if it was more restrictive, but this is less restrictive but more orderly. So in other words, right now, the way the ordinance is written is it would be 9 by 19. So this will allow them to get cars closer for display, not for customer parking. This is for display. But it just kind of clarifies about the paint and those types of things. But it's actually less restrictive than if we enforced the actual that we're on there, but it's just a little bit more orderly and manageable.
What are our plans of getting this word out to those business owners and helping them understand exactly what we're wanting from them? Because I know a lot of times it all comes down to communication. And the more we can communicate with them to let them know what's expected of them, to me, the less problem we have.
What we'll do, obviously, we'll put it on Facebook, all our social media sites. But in addition, we will draft a letter that'll be hand-delivered. Matter of fact, we've already given them something. But it'll essentially describe what it is that we're after and make sure they're in compliance. And we'll give them a period of time by which they can come into compliance. I mean, we want to be fair. You alluded to that. We don't want to run folks off. We want to straighten things up. So they will be notified via a hand-delivered letter. And secondly, they can access our social media sites.
And any questions they have, they're welcome to give us a call and we'll be happy to come out and talk with them.
Right.
Two questions. And I know that this doesn't cover it, but I assume it's covered somewhere else. How do we, the storage of vehicles, like a towing lot, where is that, is that in a different, is that just covered under ordinance?
Towing?
Yeah, for like storage of vehicles. We have every, we have displaying of vehicles, but we also have quite a few lots in town where they store vehicles. And I just wanted to know if it should be in here or we're just relying on the ordinance?
It's not, yeah, but it's basically covered in the ordinance as well as the zoning ordinance deals with both. Both of those documents deal with that. For the purpose of this, this ordinance here, now we can always bring back something else if you want to see something more, but for the specific issue of automobile dealers or automobiles on display, I feel like this will address that. But we can always come back and address if we're having issues with the storage as well in the back.
And then the last question, exceptions would be handled or requests for exceptions would still be handled under BZA or is there no process?
Because this is going to be in the municipal code. They would just go to municipal court. And if they didn't like the answer there, they'd have to go up to Chancery Court. Unlike with the, if it, under zoning ordinance is when they'll still come back to BZA, like on the storage issues that you, like we discussed just this last month. Those will still come to you. This is just dealing with any, there really won't be any exceptions that I can think of.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And it does address as well in here the storage of inoperable vehicles. You cannot have more than five on a lot, so.
It's a junkyard.
That's addressed in here. That would fall under the junkyard title.
I have a question.
Yes.
When we get to the violation and penalty, each motorized vehicle found to be in violation and subject to a fine of $50 for each offense. From that point, I mean, are we talking about each vehicle that is like not on a paved surface? I mean, we have some, some of these lots out here have a massive number of cars that are not on a paved surface.
I can tell you how I would address it is it's each offense each day. So if they had three cars, it's one offense. So it's at that one location. If we're having to go out there and deal with it, it's going to be, that's one offense. I don't think it would be overly punitive if you did it per car. And I don't think that the court would accept that as well.
It said each day.
Yeah.
So a violation is each day?
Each day it's a violation.
But if they rectify the problem, but we have an option of, become compliant, we have an option of waiving the cost, right, Jeff?
The judge does.
The judge does, yeah.
Does it say each day in here? Or should it say each day in here?
We actually have it in the general penalty clause. We can add it if you.
We can add it to here. And also, we can change that language a little bit about the, about the, what actually would, you know, like it could change it to any, for each lot found to be in violation or for each lot found to be in violation or something. We could word it differently if that causes you concern.
No motorized vehicle displayed for sale, rental or distribution shall be parked less than 10 feet from a public or private roadway or thoroughfare. How does that operate in respect to the state right of way and such as that?
Let me find that particular section, Mr. Culberson. Yes, sure.
The, as you know, in C. 3, it's over-restrictive in C. 3 with, if you just went by the state right of way, it kind of goes up to some folks close to their front door there. So what our ordinance even currently allows is to the extent that it could interfere with traffic. So the number that we came up with, so that people can get off on the shoulder road, if a police officer pulls somebody over on the side of the road, 10 feet is what the town has determined as their policy that this is, this is the amount that you can, you have to be beyond that 10 feet.
10 feet from the white line, 10 feet from the edge of the pavement, 10 feet from what?
10 feet from the road, from the white line is going to be. We're going to consider the roadway anyway.
We said a reasonable amount of time, Mr. Gill.
Well, once you pass it, I thought, I think we talked about six weeks' time, didn't we, to give them to come into compliance?
Because if you passed it this, in March, it would not go into effect really until April. Because it'd have to be two readings. So we were thinking, I don't know, give them plenty of time. We're not trying to harass anybody, so we want to give them as much time as is reasonable.
I mean, it's going to take some time to paint stripes, you know, paint stripes, do all those things. I thought we said we'd give them a good six weeks.
I think so.
I think that's what the timeframe was.
When we wrote the letter originally, I think we were going to try to take a different route to get to where we are. But that gave, that I think set a deadline of May 1st. But we were going this route, so it'll be pushed out farther.
Five inoperable vehicles on a lot. Do we ask them to start this car up and show me that it runs?
That would be a.
Well, it's up to the codes officer. A lot of it is just common sense and it's how they've been enforcing the, because they enforce that provision all the time as far as.
Like common sense, Jeff?
With junkyards. We're the government and we're here to help. But it's, I mean, that has currently been in our ordinance for as long as I've been here. So they're, the way that they're enforcing it, if there's a different way that Mr. Gill would like them to do it, we can discuss that. But I know that when Mr. Johnson goes out, if something leads him to believe a little bit more of, okay, this is not looking right, that's inoperable, like you got tire down, you've got these other kind of things. You know, you don't want to just go out to everybody's place and say, okay, start this car for me, start this car. I think it's just, if something causes them to look further, that they got a reasonable kind of suspicion that, hey, this is not moving and it's not going to move, that's how they'll probably determine it. Otherwise, if somebody complains and says, hey, guess what? Bill's over here and he's got five cars that are inoperable, obviously, that would be, lead to further suspicion to go, to go look. But I think it's just with the interpretation of that investigator that just goes out to say, hey, I've determined these to be inoperable or at least further review.
Under violation and penalty, are we going to add court cost?
The judge will do all of that. So with everyone that we do, they already have a list in our fee schedule of the court cost that's going to be assessed. And then at that point, it's up to the judge whether she, you know, wants to apply those costs or waive those costs or, and usually what we find if somebody works with us too, even like, so we've got $50 a day in violations, that it could wind up being $1,200 for if you did every day. But depending on their workability or getting it done, usually what she will do is, the judge will say, I'll give you this amount of time. If they haven't done it by this point, if they got it there, I'm going to revisit your case in a week or two weeks. And if you've got it done, then I'm going to drop it down to this amount. If not, you're going to pay the full amount when you come back here. So, you know, sometimes it does take, you don't want that to happen. Sometimes it does take the authority of the judge for someone to finally get their attention. So that's the purpose of it there. But now at least we get in there a lot quicker than we used to.
Other questions?
I just have a statement. I mean, you know, one thing that we've talked all along about cleaning up Lowry Street, that it was going to be a long and arduous process. And we began really with the check cashing places and such as that. And, you know, really, you can tell the difference already. I mean, they're just not proliferating like they were. And of course, now we've got the Lowry Street overlay in there and I think that that's going to bring some big changes in. And there's no doubt that this one is a, is a big step. And I've driven up and down Lowry just over the last couple of, you know, days and weeks looking at it and thinking in my head, that's a violation, that's a violation, that's a violation. And if those things go away and put in, so to speak, neat and orderly looking lots, it will go a long way. And then, you know, nice things begat nice things. So, you know, as we go through this, it's getting better, you know? And I'm real proud of the council for having the wherferall to ask the staff to do this and more especially with the staff for actually, you know, coming up and doing these things. I mean, when we bring in town manager candidates, we could fly them in from Murfreesboro and drive them down. Drive them, drive them right through Murfreesboro.
Anything else for Nathan?
Thank you.
We will move on to item 21, which is consideration of appointments to boards and commissions. And just to let people know, we'll be taking applications for our boards and committees up until March the 2nd. And all you have to do is go to our town website to apply. It tells you, gives you a little brief description about each board and committee, what time the meetings actually start, when the meetings are held. And we encourage you to get involved in your community and put in an application for a board or committee.
We actually need some people.
We do. There's quite a few boards that we don't have anybody that has stepped up and put in an application for. So I know we have something under other tonight, Jeff?
Chief, I can take it if you can ask Chief if you have any other questions. But as we even discussed tonight with the opioid issues that our state's facing, I'm sure each of you by now has heard of the different public safety departments seeking to carry and be able to administer, commonly known as Narcan, is naloxone for those that have overdosed. The Tennessee Legislature has also provided us protections The Tennessee legislature has also provided us protections for our public safety officers in the use of naloxone. So that's, that was one of the main concerns, but, but the state has taken care of that. Chief reached, sought out a grant from the Chatham County Community Coalition and received that. And this is, would be the policy that the officers would follow. And chief is, has, basically chief and I'm sure probably Captain Spearman have put together all of this, and I just reviewed it, so, but they've done all the work to get this. So it, it will definitely have the potential to save lives within a matter of weeks.
Chief, anything else you want to add?
Well, I think first off is unfortunately, we are a community, just like the, all the other communities around us, who are facing this crisis. Now, we have not run any numbers lately, but I know about eight to 10 months ago, we ran numbers and we were experiencing five overdose deaths a month. So that's 60 people a year. So unfortunately, that opiate crisis has reached our community. And, and at the same time, not only to help our citizens, because I mean, this could be potentially one of our family members out here, but at the same time, with the fentanyl and those type of things out there, just to protect the officers, if they accidentally touch this stuff, I mean, they could, they could immediately go into cardiac arrest. So, you know, Earl was telling me earlier today about individual last night on Sam Ridley Parkway that's overdosed and has his foot on the brake in a car. So they're having to make sure that the car is turned off, so when they revive him, he doesn't suddenly shoot off down the road. Anyway, we got this from Chatham County Community, anyway, it's a coalition. And it's a grant for right now, but it will be enough, all of our officers have received the training, it will be enough for each officer to have several doses of this in their vehicle, so that if they do come across one of our citizens in crisis, they can administer this.
Is it something you can kind of keep us informed on our weekly report as to how much it's being used, that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am. And for that matter, it is, I mean, once we run out, it's on state bid.
Okay.
So I think it's $32 or $36 for two doses.
Questions for Chief?
Just a comment, great job for being proactive on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then if there's nothing else under other, we'll move into our directors' reports tonight, because the students were here and all, and we had so many presentations, we didn't do the tables, so if you all will just come up one at a time, and I'll let you all decide how you want to. Oh, Chief is going to knock here, oh, Tom Rose!
Look from Mike Strange like, you're by yourself over there, you go ahead.
Don't be batty.
Just a couple of things, let's see, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have a kickoff meeting for the H&amp;H study, the report that was put together. We're going to be meeting with a consultant to kick off the design plans for those projects. It's the drainage improvements for Rotary Soccer Park as well as downtown Smyrna. Also, found out the other day that we were able to receive an additional $356,000 from the MPO for the Stonecrest-Sammerly intersection project. They'll help out a lot as our impact fee fund decreases quickly.
That was their 80%. Is that correct?
Yeah, that'll bring us back up to an 80%, 20%. Basically, the cost of the project had, from what was originally submitted to TDOT six, seven years ago versus what the actual project is now, has gone up considerably, thus the price has gone up, the cost has gone up considerably as well.
So is it a million dollar project now? Close to it.
If you add in all the right of way acquisition, it would be probably just under a million dollars.
They've really missed the mark with respect to what their initial estimate was.
Yes.
Yeah, as I read, the email, this allows us to go forward in a more quick fashion.
Well, yeah, we are in with FHWA right now, waiting to get approval from them to go into construction phase. They've had these middle since January 24th, so I'm hoping in the next two, three, four weeks, that we should be able to get approval on that one.
Yeah.
For construction phase.
No paths that I see.
It's not nesting time yet, so. Also, I attended the I-24 Smart Corridor Tactical Advisory Committee meeting. That's communities in this area, Rutherford County as well, Metro Nashville, THP was present, also the consultants, Kimmy Horn, FHWA was there as well. What they're looking at doing is long, some short-term, intermediate, and long-term deployments for upgrades to the I-24 corridor, to be able to move people in and out of basically Rutherford County, from, between Rutherford County and Nashville in a more even manner, instead of having some of those spikes where it might take over an hour, hour and a half to get in and out of Nashville. They're looking at streamlining it, hoping that what they can do is make it more consistent time to get from one end of the 24 to the other. Some things in short-term, that the deployments that they're looking at doing is increasing the communication network, doing some arterial signal upgrades to it, which would be something like along Sam Ridley. Of course, we have the ITS project that's going to take care of that here soon. Some extending some ramp accelerate, ramp lanes, so that you can get more acceleration up before you go to merge, to help prevent these slowdowns. Roadside traveler information portals, some emergency pull-offs for disabled vehicles, and incentivized towing. Some things that they're looking at to do in, within, I don't want to give away too much, but they're hoping to get started in about a year from now, on some of these shorter term things. Of course, there are other, many other aspects that they're looking at longer down the road. That's all.
I know that this is a priority for Commissioner Schrower, so I would say they're going to move on it as quickly as possible, so. Questions for Tom? Thanks. Chief?
Just a few things, not only are we working on the 4th of July activities, but we're also looking at our annual youth academy, our kids' safety. We'd like to ask everybody to mark their calendar for April the 14th for our Family Safety Expo. And they're really coming along, Marion is really coming, doing a lot of work on our new pumper. We hope to hear a date of delivery on that soon, but we're, we're staying busy.
Questions for Chief? Glad you're back, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Very quickly, tonight at 8 o'clock, we are going to assist Chick-fil-A in shutting down. So if you're wanting Chick-fil-A, you better get there before 8 o'clock. The manager specifically requested that we assist. They have, they are shutting down for a month, I think, to renovate or something to that effect. And of course, my wife will go through delirium tremors, but anyway, they are actually going to shut it down tonight at 8 o'clock, so we are sending an officer out there.
Do they think there might be riots or things like that? Is why you need to be there?
To be honest with you, I was a little surprised at his, his concern, but anyway, he is very concerned, and I told him we would assist.
He's driving by, they're going to think something's going down at the Chick-fil-A.
And something is going down, so. Anyway, yes, sir. So we will, we will assist them tonight with their shutting down of their grafter.
Tell them I know where he can get a food truck.
Any questions for Chief?
Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Mayor and Council, we do have planning commission next week, and do have another busy agenda, about three items that will be coming to you all. I just want to reiterate, I guess, once I mentioned last month, we are kicking off and getting started on two plans, and we are still looking for some folks that want to participate in those steering committees and those kind of things. So for our downtime master plan, we pretty much got that one put together, but for the comprehensive planning committee, we would invite people that they're interested to let us know.
Great. Questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin. Mike Strange?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of quick things. Jerome Dempsey and CTI are in the process of doing the facilities plan for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Once that is complete, everything will be ready to be submitted to the state for approval, probably by the end of March. So as we step forward, we'll, we'll go for approval and then go out to bid and, and move forward with construction. The other thing, we did our after-action meeting on the Four-R Force Main leaks, leaks that we had, talking with Mr. Gill and staff, and reviewing what the pipe looked like. We are replacing that pipe under an emergency situation, probably around 3,000 feet. The cost of that's a little over $400,000. So we have got a contractor in place, who's supposed to start this week, but with the rain, it may be next week. So we are eliminating that issue from happening.
And will any businesses see any?
No, ma'am. There will not be any effect on that.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Thanks. Who's next? Rex?
Local sales tax collected, a little bit over $1.4 million. This is for December transactions for Christmas, basically, so. That gets us to a year-to-date surplus of a little bit over $41,000. State shared tax collected a little bit over $582,000. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of a little bit over $83,000. Mr. Gill and I have been working with the department heads, having budget meetings, and our point of emphasis at this point is on capital projects.
Great. Any questions for Rex? Thank you, Rex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things, we're taking sign-ups for the First Tea After School program. It's March 15th through May the 10th, from 5:00 to 6:30 on Thursdays, age 8 to 17. You can sign up at firstteahimiddletennessee.com. We're also airfining our greens March 5th, 6th, and 7th, so that's just to let everybody know that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we will be airfining. We also have something that's really neat, I'm, I'm quite excited about. Camp Gladiator is coming to Smyrna Golf Course. Any of you heard of Camp Gladiator?
No.
Camp Gladiator is a national organization, they have 750 sites throughout the country, and they do aerobic boot camps, and it's, it's high intensity exercise. Nashville's their newest market, they've just started marketing to Nashville, started marketing to Rutherford County. Also, they actually held an event this past weekend over at one of the major parks in Nashville, getting people to come out, they're doing free boot camp starting March the 5th, and then they, we signed them up, they're going to do Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the four-acre nursery that the utility department and the golf course developed, right there on, on the road. The first class will be March the 19th.
Great.
Yeah, go to Google, YouTube, Camp Gladiator, and see their videos, it's pretty impressive. It was started by a man and his wife in Austin, Texas, and it's huge.
Thanks for thinking outside of the box, of other ways, you know, other than just, yeah, and of other things than just golf, for the golf course.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're doing a few things in the background, hopefully that won't impact or be too terribly visible either to the public or to employees. But one of the things that we're working on is adding some equipment to increase the resiliency and additional protections from internet threats and whatnot. So we're looking at doing that next week and bringing things online in that regard. Another thing that we're looking at, I've been meeting, have met a couple of times with Metro Nashville and other municipalities and counties, looking at what might be applicable for Smyrna with regard to those various smart city initiatives. The ITS is one such project that can be categorized as that, but there's a number of other things too, and we're looking to see what might be good for Smyrna in that regard.
Great. Questions for Robert?
Now, just a comment, that's good, being so proactive on the ITS security side. I don't know if Spring Hill is still locked down on their ransomware, but I know November, December, and January, they were struggling.
Spring, Spring Hill got hit, there was another nearby city, I'm not sure offhand, so I don't want to mention names, a couple of years ago, they got hit pretty hard. And it can be crippling.
Very much so.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Mike or Jeff?
Mayor and Council, obviously, we're busy this time of year, starting to kick off our leagues and sign-ups and all that type of thing. This weekend with the nice weather, the parks were packed, which was a good thing. Tomorrow night, Volunteer of the Year Dinner will be honoring Mike Allen and Sidney Sane, so we're excited about that, hope you can make it out for that. We're always excited to have that, that night and recognize the volunteers as well. A lot of my time's been spent on capital projects, which y'all know, so y'all see the contracts. Mr. Gill and I had a meeting today talking about Cedarstone Park and Nolan Drive. Nolan Drive plans are about done, they're 90% done, they were waiting on a couple of comments, we were talking about sidewalks versus multi-use paths and that type of thing, so we're down to that point on Nolan Drive, and then we've got some easements to obtain as well. Cedarstone Park, most of the grade work as far as design is complete there, they are working on the lighting systems and TBA easements, we're having to move around that as well. One thing that's kind of come about in the last couple of years is LED lighting for athletic vehicles. It's a little bit more expensive, but it also is a lot less expensive to operate, so we're looking at that option at the park, and it would obviously save some money over the course of time, comes with a 25-year warranty. Again, it's a little bit more upfront, but we're going to at least consider it, kind of like the synthetic turf. It's coming along, you know, the, the maintenance of it is a lot less, which equals less people to maintain the park. So that's, that's basically it.
Questions for Mike?
I have a question. So on the Nolan Drive, again, I don't recall seeing Nolan Drive in the budget for this fiscal year. Is it this fiscal year that we're looking at, or next year in the capital expenditures?
The construction one being next year, and it'd be up to y'all to approve it being next year's budget, yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Jeff?
Mayor and Council, I'll hit a couple of hot points that I sent in our weekly report earlier. We are working on the town manager posting, which we anticipate going out next week. Also, we did email out today our anti-bullying policy that you guys passed recently, so that's good. We're going to be doing training on that for all employees in March. And then the chamber spoke tonight about the cost of having an unhealthy workplace. And just today, we got recognized as being a healthier Tennessee workplace, that's part of the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness. So we're doing some things really well on that front, and so I'm really excited that we got that recognition for the employees here in Smyrna.
Great. Questions for Jeff? Okay, thanks, Jeff. Ms. Diane, anything?
So far this month, we've issued 35 new business licenses, and we're continuing to work on, with our contractors, getting them all licensed, and that's running real well, and doing some training on our new utility software.
And property taxes are due at the end of the month?
Due at the end of the month.
Right. Mr. Gill?
Just quickly, what triggered this was Bert Mason's response, and it, I kind of hearken back to a lot of the things we've done to promote safety in the town, many of the ideas initiated by the directors, but, you know, we started a prepare-a-thon every Also, here in the next week or two, I met with Chief and Bobby Gibson, we'll, we'll do an active shooter drill here at Town Center and discuss doing things in other places. Sad that we've reached that point, but, I mean, we've got to do that. I think I told you, we'll be sending out a safety handbook to every employee so that they know how to respond accordingly to different kind of safety issues. Also, Bert was hired full-time safety director, Mr. Strange implemented an incentive plan for safety in his department, which has paid dividends. Our workmen comps claims are down because of programs we've initiated, I'm proud of K. Charles, so those are a few things we've done. And one other thing I want to mention, we're still working on the olive branch sewer extension, and I'm hoping before I sail away to have something to you.
Great. Questions for Mr. Gill? Jeff?
Yes, and over, since we met last, our office has filed condonation proceedings on the remaining tracks that we needed for Enid Springs Road expansion. We, on 38 South Lowry, we, the, we see the study back on the environmental study, came back all right, so we're planning to close on that on February 28th. And as you saw, we, Hal, I think, placed it on his already, but we finally rolled out the contract addendum that I had sent to you all, so, and met with the staff today and discussed that with them, so. and discussed that with them, so you'll be seeing that on every goods and services contract that come forward soon.
Great. Questions for Jeff? Raquel?
Just to say congratulations to Mike Allen and Sidney Sane for the banquet tomorrow, I actually will not be able to attend, my kids are in a speech and debate tournament that started today that I didn't get to go to, but they will be in it through Saturday, so I did want to say congratulations to them, as well as the other honorees that will be recognized at the banquet. And congratulations on the employee recognition, Jeff. And I think that's it for me.
Great, thanks, Raquel. HG?
Also, giving congratulations to Mike Allen for his winning the award and the years of service which he's put into the community, make it a well-deserved award for him. But, you know, there are many other people that'll be honored tomorrow night also, with each one of the leagues, the people who have spent a lot of time working with the youth of our community. And I also need to talk about Sidney Sane, and that she is a very deserving young lady. And that award is sponsored by CIMA, the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, so we're very proud to be able to honor her, and I guess I just better add to it, shop local. Thank you.
Oh, probably one of the things I'm always most excited about that was added a couple of years ago is that each league honors an individual participant in that league, so they honor a child that is not necessarily the best athlete, but it may be the one who's been, that's tried the hardest, or been the best teammate, or something like that. So I'm really glad to see that we're honoring kids that aren't necessarily the one who always comes in first. I think that's important, so I always look forward to seeing those kids each year, so. Tim?
Again, congratulations to Mike and Sidney, I think Raquel and HG said it well. You know, my big takeaway, every year there is just a sense of community and family, when everyone gets together, you see how involved our citizens are as far as their children and the activities, and it's a great night, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thanks, Tim. Steve?
Obviously, the Volunteer Year Banquet, which everybody's mentioned, I've been participating for about 10 years in that program, in that meeting, and it's always fun, you get to enjoy chef's cooking, and see kind of leaders around the community, or future leaders for the kids, so it's really a good event. Tickets are for sale at the door, right, Mike? Yeah, so if you don't already have plans, come get some chef's cooking. Also, the Senior Citizen Center will be hosting a chili supper, actually a chili cook-off in support of the Sister City Committee, that is a fundraiser to help the kids offset the cost of the trip that they'll be taking in July. And some of our council members, I'm not sure exactly who's coming, but some of us will be there to judge the chili and award several different best of class, I guess, they have several different awards.
And that's this Saturday from...
That is this Saturday, 5:00 to 7:00. Probably get there at 5:00, get all the options you can get on the chili, because by 7:00, I have a feeling it's going to be gone.
Sure.
And I know they've sold well over 300 tickets so far to the event, they were actually looking for additional chili, so.
Get there early if you're...
That's right, that's right, you better get there early.
Lori?
It is, the program for tomorrow night is always great to be at, to see the volunteers in the community. And one thing that I missed, we had a death in the family, and we're traveling last week, so I missed the council meeting, was, but wanted to congratulate you on your retirement that was announced, so I had heard that. And to also thank Mike Strange, Tom Rose, and all of their workers and the departments in working to get that sewer, the wastewater line back so quickly. I know there were a lot of businesses also appreciative of how quickly you all handled that.
Great. Mark?
You know, congratulations to Mike and Sidney, I think everybody up here is very proud of them and what they do in our community. I want to, I don't want to forget to recall where all this started, and I know your father would not want us sitting up here praising him, but Kenneth Coon Victory is the reason we have this banquet, and of course, he's raised a pretty good daughter, I think, too, so.
He'd say it's the other one.
Yeah, well, that's exactly who I was talking about.
Okay.
She stepped into that one, I didn't do that, so. But I do want to congratulate Coon for all his years and what he's meant to our community too. As I listen to Mr. Gill talk about Mr. Mack, Mr. Mack Williams, I recall the day we had his funeral service at the school, at that time, I was in ROTC and actually loaded him in the hearse, so I have fond memories of Mr. Mack. With that said, you know, we still have people that have followed in his footsteps, and one of the people that I mentioned to the mayor earlier is Robert Rakes, Bud Rakes, you know, we're fortunate to still have him around here, and he is an icon to this community. He's done a lot of great things, he's been an educator for years, you've been an educator for years, my wife's been in education, I know a lot of people in education, and I just want to say thank you to those people, thank you to those people that teach these kids and take their time every day to go to work and pour themselves into our young people. It's really, it's kind of a thankless thing when you get to the end of it, it's expected of our teachers to do certain things. So I just want to thank them for stepping outside the circle and being willing to do that, and to all of you who kind of blazed that trail too, you were a teacher, so. And with that, that's all I have, I just want to say thanks to those people.
Couple of items tonight, don't forget boards and committees, the deadline is March the 2nd, we want as many people involved as we can get, and you can go online at thetownofsmyrna.org to put in an application. We talked a little bit about the lifetime service and Volunteer of the Year banquet, which will be tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00. The dinner starts at 6:30, and tickets are $10. The awards program starts at 7:00, and if you cannot attend the event, you can watch it on Smyrna TV live, beginning at 7:00 o'clock. The annual Easter egg hunt is Saturday, March, no, Saturday, March the 24th at 1:00 p.m. at Lee Victory Recreation Park, and the Easter Bunny will be there for pictures. And I think that's it in regards to announcements, other than I have two other items, we lost a citizen today, Donnie Williams, and really good family, Williams Brothers Cabinet Company, and we just want to say, give our condolences to his family and to Sharon, and Donnie's going to be missed in this community. Also, wanted to congratulate Tony Trumpire, they named the swimming pool after Coach Trumpire, I think many of us know of Coach Trumpire, have had him in school or worked with him, and I think it was very much a deserving honor to name the swimming pool after Coach Trumpire, so congratulations to him. Directors, Department...
30 years?
I think it was 30 years, I think that's right, I think that's right. Department heads or directors, if you want one of these, I have one if you'd like to have one, they left me a few extra, and they'll be up here at the desk, so, anything else?
One party shot, I really, I'm sorry, Raquel, pardon me.
Okay, sure, go ahead, Raquel.
No, you go. It's not, I'm fine.
Okay, as you were talking about the education, I also think we should extend our condolences to the school in Florida, who suffered the traffic law, tragic loss.
I can't even begin to imagine what those individuals are going through, and what that community is going through, and what they're having to do to deal with that, so I would definitely agree, so thanks for reminding us of that.
One thing I thought you probably would cover, and you may not even know about it yet, but we, Chef mentioned in the staff meeting this morning that on April the 1st, he'll have his annual Easter feast. If you hadn't been there, you'd need to treat yourself, it's 1995, and some of the best food you can eat, and he assures us it'll be a sellout, so if you're interested in going, you can call the event center and make reservations for your family, and again, that's April the 1st.
I will say, you need to get on it quick, because it has each year gotten to be a sellout, you're right.
I think last year, we couldn't get in till like 1:20, I got to the last minute, so we barely got in last year.
And the times are 11 to 2, I appreciate you mentioning that.
Okay, anything else? Nothing else, then we are adjourned.